Good evening and welcome to knowing that is meeting house, I could say, because that's technically what we are in. In fact, you go back long enough into history, that's exactly why you had buildings of this type. And I don't like to handle worship times for the community, but also meeting times. So we had county rules. So we're sort of holding up that historical nature tonight by welcoming you here. A couple logistical things we want you to be aware of. You can see the exit signs, although I'm sure there won't be any sparks flying here tonight, correct? So we won't have to worry about a fire, but it should. Should you need to, you can see them on either side of the question cell. If you need to use the restroom, we have a intersection one that's up on this floor, and then supercon and women upstairs. So Frank Lewis is back, he should be able to drag you through some assistance there. But on behalf of congregation, we welcome you and hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Paul. So thank you for attending the meeting and providing your views on the proposed ordinance. Please realize that at the outset, that it's a draft, meaning all of it or any of it is subject to change after we hear your views. We truly appreciate the turnout and look forward to hearing the views from all sides. Now, before we get going further, I'll note this is a special meeting of the knowing zoning commission. And there are a few housekeeping measures to take care of. So I'm going to call us to order at 6:31. And instead of our role call, I'll ask people to raise their hands, I don't have to pass the microphones. To my left, Art Tanner, Lake Powell, Nip Tanner, Lake Powell, Beth Steele, and Dana Hovian. And my name is Rick Smith, and I'm the chairman. As a starting point, short-term rentals were not an authorized use of land under the existing knowing zoning ordinance. They're different than long-term rentals, which are residential in nature. More?
Yeah, a little closer to your mouth, a little closer, okay.
They are different than long-term rentals, which are residential in nature. Short-term rentals are lodging accommodations more like a hotel than a home. This is supported by provisions of Connecticut's tax and building codes. Because of this fact, in 2019, we started the process to permit short-term rentals as unauthorized use, provided they complied with certain requirements proposed by the commission. After the public input, we received that at that time, the commission stopped the formal rulemaking process and reviewed the comments and reconsidered our goals. Our conclusion was that the scope of the activity needed to be brought in are to simple concern about noise and parking congestion, to consider the broader effects of short-term renting on the nature of knowing's neighborhoods and community. The commission believes some actions warranted to minimize the risk of knowing's residential neighborhoods and the community due to the adverse effects of short-term renting. The result of our efforts after almost two years of reviewing the issue is the commission's draft of proposed measures. This draft is the subject of this informal public comment period. It's an opportunity for the residents and property owners of knowing to comment on the draft proposal before the commission decides what to propose for adoption through the legal rulemaking process. We ask that you understand we are authorized as elected commissioners to make such decisions in the best interest of the entire community. We are trying to do so with the best intentions and with the interest of all knowingers in mind. The way you can be most influential is to tell it to change and why. You can use your three minutes any way you wish, but specific comments and suggestions regarding the draft proposal can allow us to achieve our goals in ways that are more satisfactory to you. We'll be of greater influence than generic comments about short-term rental regulations supporting process. We'll hold speakers to the three-minute limit, so that everyone has an equal opportunity to offer their views. I realize there is some confusion out there about this rule that came up very late today. But be clear, no one gets more than three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of another, that's fine, but you do not also get pretty much for yourself. We will not answer questions and we will not debate points made. That would infringe too much on the rights of others to have their chance to be heard. We will make no decisions tonight or deliberate to commission. We want to listen to the public's views. Now, about eight o'clock, we'll take about a 10-minute break, just to everybody can stretch their legs. And then we'll continue. We'll go up to, but not later than 10:15, because the church needs to close down by 10:30. Speakers who exceed their allowed time will not step away from the microphone. We'll only be preventing their neighbors from exercising their opportunity to be heard. I urge you to respect everyone's opportunities, as that old word could preserve yours. And the event order cannot be maintained. We may have to adjourn for control of those who are unable to speak, who have lost their opportunity to do so. If that happens, it's unlikely that the commission will hold no information. A few questions have come repeatedly over the past two years, and I refrain from responding individually until I can do so in public forum, where every interested party could hear the response at the same time. And I'll respond to those who do not. First, the commission is not obligated to satisfy anyone's opinion on how many complaints must be lodged in order to justify this proposal. As a zoning condition, the use of land in the fire district is under our jurisdiction. We would not require the submission of complaints to review an issue as important as short-term renting. The fact that complaints to review an issue as important as short-term renting, the fact that complaints have occurred, and that there are significant examples of unacceptable activities at short-term rental properties across the country, is sufficient to justify our actions on this topic. Second, where complaints have occurred is not to do with the issue. If disruptive behavior associated with short-term rentals can occur anywhere, regulation and activity is justified everywhere. Importantly, short-term rentals are not permitted use in the zoning district and in any zoning district in knowing at this time. So if the commission decides to authorize them, it makes sense that the rules are uniform for wherever the use is permitted. Third, this is not a property rights issue. Some of the commissions are authorized to determine what uses are allowed in different zoning districts under that jurisdiction. This is typically done by giving commercial activities in commercial zones and preserving residential zones for residential purposes. That said, the intent of our proposals, if it can be honest, I'm doing to allow some short-term renting activity in the fire district, regulated properly for the benefit of the entire community. With that, I'm going to go right to the speakers list. The first one up is Zell Stever, followed by Patricia Oak, followed by Sloan Keck. You've made a lot of visits. Zell, you might turn that mic off. Don't pick up the mic, just this one. For Patricia Oak and Sloan Keck, you may want to move forward and be ready, if you want. Or, you know, it doesn't look like we have a... Yeah, just...
Good evening, I'm Tom Secret, and I'm with the 81st Street. And I want to thank you for providing the opportunity to present our views on short-term rentals. I have three documents that I've already submitted, but that are not available to the general public. They're sitting at the back corner of the room, and you're welcome to take a copy with you. One is my testimony, one is the letter that an attorney has put together for us, and the last one is an 11-page, one-by-one discussion of why we think the zoning amendments, how they might be changed to meet an appropriate way of regulating our short-term rentals in this community. I'd like to first of all start by showing you why we've got a problem. This is 2009, this is 2021, and you can see why it is we need to basically have some sort of regulation on short-term rents. This is a map, which some of you in the back can't see, but it's a map of the zoning, of all the zoning districts, and all the red dots and all the stars on here are where currently short-term rentals are taking place. The stars are those that we know are owned by corporations, the reds are, as far as we can tell, owned by individual property owner. I should say this data is probably conservative, because there are probably people operating under the radar in this case. And so, the other map is, so that this is more for the zoning boards appreciation. It shows you the blue properties that are all under short-term rentals. The gray shows you where the parking lots and driveways are for everybody, as it is, as appears on the town website. And then finally, you've got on here, in sort of a yellow, all the buildings in the fire district. So that you all know there's somewhere around 900 buildings in the fire district, and they, and that number is, I think it's about how you actually do it. Having said that, I want to stop with any of my testimony and basically read to you part of a letter that is forwarded to the zoning commission. The four elements for which we request changes are as follows. One, short-term rentals must be owner-occupied. Knowing should require that one owner of the property live on the property and be available to benefit the short-term rental. The short-term rentals are similar to hotels for motels and require owner presence. We think this is a common sense compromise between the existing regulations, which do not allow short-term rentals, and those in which to offer short-term rentals.
Well, that's three minutes. Okay. Number first, you guys have to...
That's it.
Thank you. And this is all coming to us in writing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, I need the mic. Thank you. Next up is Patricia Oak.
The proposed zoning laws represent nothing less than a battle for the hardened soul of knowing. By presenting an ominous vision of a knowing hollowed out by illegal short-term rentals, you have rationalized the creation of laws that exert immense power over the finances and freedoms of knowing rentals. In your meetings, commissioners have said they specifically crafted the laws in order to help their dear friends who need rental income to stay, pay their taxes. In specifying the number of allowable days, the chair said that a homeowner should be able to earn $6,000, which ought to be enough to pay their taxes. It should go without saying that laws should not be crafted to benefit dear friends, nor should they be designed to make residents conform to specific yet intangible definitions of what knowing is. One commissioner said the reason for making a new homeowner wait three years to get a permit is so that the person will have enough time to absorb the culture of knowing, which one member defined as a Baptist church, the yacht club, the luminaria, and the close-knit relationships in the village. The zoning commission looks like a condo board that has adopted the privileges of a private club. Before the American Revolution, towns in Connecticut functioned like your commission is functioning. In each town, leaders could decide if they were going to let a stranger stay in town or turn them out. In 1790, the state legislature ruled that towns could no longer have the power to admit or turn away people. They recognized that citizens had the right to open their doors to whomever they chose. That right still exists, which you tacitly acknowledge, by allocating $50,000 in legal fees to defend your legislation in the next fiscal year. My house, built in the 1780s, still has the record of short-term rentals. Each person who rented a room was given a hammer and nail to hang up their clothes on the strip of wood that you can see in these pictures. They're still on my walls when the house was restored, they're left in place. Let's see. Each one of these nail holes represents knowing's past and its present, and they should also represent its future. This year, I've had rental requests from people like the couple who came to take care of an elderly relative in knowing who had COVID, or were here for a funeral, or a birth, or to revisit their childhood vacation spot, or were naval officers here for a very short term. The residents of the knowing you are trying to erase were fiercely independent. They did not need anyone to tell them how much they could earn, or how often they could welcome someone into their home. And they certainly would not have agreed to have their right to privacy trampled upon by agreeing to send a certified letter to their neighbors informing them of their rental plans. What has changed is not the people coming and going, but the composition of those who hold the power in this town. We've gone from a blue-collar town to a bright white one. These regulations are guaranteed to sow divisions within knowing. Indeed, they already have.
Ms. Oak?
Yes.
Next is Sloan Keck, then Wayne Burdick, then Rick Waters. Sloan Keck, is she here?
Can you turn the microphone on?
Believe it, it's on. You just have to stand very close to it. We need your help, Frank. Okay. Sloan Keck here, no. So, then Wayne Burdick, was Burdick here?
Hello, knowingers. I'm Wayne Burdick. Born and raised in knowing fifteen days short. Place built in 1869 by the first of our relations. Mom and dad bought it from Brenton. We ended up, after mom and dad had passed, in that house. We bought it seven years ago by significant authority by cousin Dwight. And we're trying to keep our home. We love knowing, we love our home. It is absolutely necessary for us, unfortunately, to pay the $40,000-plus in taxes and maintenance on the home to use SDRs to be able to keep it. And then I am trying hard not to be emotional about it, so I'll try to be logical. I support an alternative SDR rule based upon what the commission is already on board with, but also realizing that whether you are an SDR or whether you are a full-time resident, traffic differences are really negligible. In fact, if you compare it to the thousand-plus boats that have traffic going to them back and forth, if you compare it to the 300-plus seats of restaurants in the knowing fire district, it really is meaningless, it impales quite the person. And then, everybody that I know, and we've been doing SDRs now for five years, we have not had one link. We have neighbors that believe that the guests that we have had are good parts of our economy, good parts of the fabric of our little village, and that we are certainly concerned that we protect the peace and quiet of the town. We want to make sure that we have the ability to have a safe, secure place. And it is the paradise that all of us grew up in love. I am in support, and I believe that Sylvia Ruckowska, I hope I have announced her name correctly, will be speaking later about an alternative proposal that is being made. And we support that alternative proposal, basically with a special request, that the SDR rule as proposed has a greater number of nights per year allowed. I can tell you that at 45 nights a year, it doesn't really make a dent in that $40,000 check that we have to write each year. And I also believe that it should be, that the restriction on frequency should not be every, you know, one every two weeks or whatever. The restriction on frequency should be removed. We love our home. We want to be part of this community. We want to hang on to our home long enough so that the next generations of Burdicks are able to do it. Thank you.
Are you going to submit that by email?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to submit your comments by email?
I will send something.
Thank you. Next up is Rick Waters, followed by Mary Cuthbert, and then Sandy Wallace.
My name is Richard Waters, and I live at 13 Main Street. I would like to thank the knowing zoning commission for making time available for public input. Too often, a late meeting is adjourned with no time left for public comment. I feel there is a real threat to our community from unregulated short-term rentals. Regulation is needed, but one of the problems with regulation is enforcing regulations. I feel there are three basic principles of regulation that are easily enforceable. One, this community is well-versed in the concept of a finite number of moorings being available due to constraints of usable waterfront space. No one may obtain a mooring permit until someone gives up their mooring. I feel the same principle should dictate the number of short-term rental permits that are granted. Whether this number is chosen by a percentage of population or some other method that can be debated and decided later, the number of permits should be finite. Two, my personal belief is that short-term rentals should only be allowed in a dwelling where the owner lives. This would reduce noisy parties and limit wild real estate speculation. The beauty of this regulation is in its simplicity and its ease of enforcement. If the name on the deed is not the same as the name on the permit, and the resident of the owner, no permit is issued. Three, along with an annual application for a permit, there should be an annual inspection for conformity to existing health, safety, and fire codes. I feel these three conditions are simple, reasonable, and easily enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mary Cuthbert.
Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Mary Cuthbert, and I live at...
Thank you. You can tip it down, I think.
I'm not good at this stuff. Thank you. My name is Mary Cuthbert, and I live at 13 Main Street. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. What brought us all here today is the simple fact that the current zoning regulations were not enforced. Short-term rentals are currently illegal. Despite what may have occurred long ago with boarding houses or other places where one could rent for a short stay, knowing is primarily been a residential district of owner-occupied homes, or long-term rentals of apartments and private homes. This obvious lack of zoning enforcement compliance is precisely why your proposed regulations of short-term rentals prove too difficult and too complicated to enforce, requires neighbors to monitor neighbors, and with binoculars, security cameras to record the number of rental parties that are in a defined period of time. By keeping it simple, we can continue to either ban illegal short-term rentals or require owner-occupied home. Not owner representative, owner property manager, operator, host, just define the owner as a person of persons who hold a legal right to the property, and they require it be owner-occupied during the course of the rental. All over the country, cities, villages, and states are having difficulties with short-term rentals, and their negative impacts on residential communities. Many are moving towards the owner occupied only, i.e. LA, San Fratello, Santa Monica, San Francisco, New York, Las Vegas, the Hamptons, Vermont, Simsbury, the Cape, Arlington, I mean, to name but a few. So I support the proposed changes to your regulations submitted by Matt Renelly, who's going to submit them at some point, though I do not support short-term rentals as a home occupation, because it commercializes property in the residential district without producing a product. You know, we have boat builders, we have painters, we have fishermen. So I recognize that short-term rentals represent a financial opportunity for some, and a challenge for knowing residents who are opposed. We'd all like to preserve our family legacy, but personal hardship stories are irrelevant when it comes to zoning laws that are put in place for the greater good. In order to ensure that knowing remains a vibrant year-round and affordable residential community, we must have regulations. And we must have an active zoning enforcement office to ensure compliance with those regulations. And the rest is, you'll get it. I mean, Airbnb is a multi-billion dollar company, they have funds to hire lawyers to help people so they can do their short-term regulations, but they really don't give a damn about us, and me, and our residential communities. And none of the dollars of this enormous profitable business goes back into the community to pay for services or anything else, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sandy Wallace, followed by Sylvia Ruckowska. Is Sandy Wallace here? No Sandy Wallace? Okay, Sylvia Ruckowska, followed by Brayden Schwartz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sylvia Ruckowska. I'm wearing a mask today because I picked up a virus for my son, so I'm spare everybody the bug of virus threat by continuing to wear it. Again, I represent the interests of numerous knowingers here who are interested in sustaining their short-term rental abilities. Just by way of background, quickly, not only do I represent the public in commission and land use applications, I also have been in your seat and represent zoning commissions, zoning enforcement officers, wetlands commissions in many towns, so I'm very familiar with the process, the burden that you've taken upon yourselves, and very much respecting the commitment that you all have taken. You already have a June 28th letter from me, which is a 13-page-long letter, which I trust that you all have read, which gives you some legal framework, and I hope that you consider that in your decision-making process. Obviously, in three minutes, I can't get to any of that, really. It's probably impossible for a lawyer to speak in only three minutes. But some of the things that I want to focus on is reminding you that the law requires that in your ability to amend the regulations, that there is a reason and uniformity associated with that. Reason requires that you make fact, substantiated facts dictate what you do, and that the responses are narrowly tailored to the actual issues that are at hand. In addition, the law requires that a reasonable consideration be made of the specific character and history of knowing, which I contend, and my client will contend, includes a seasonal beach rental community, and that cannot be divorced from what these regulations hold. I urge this commission, and anyone sitting in this room, to review the PowerPoint that has been submitted by the knowingers for responsible SDRs, as there are several missing facts that are contended that this commission should be reviewing. In my 13-page letter, the most important or the most material aspect is the restriction on the rental frequency and number of rentals. I will contend that there is no nexus between that restriction and any substantiated facts. They are overly burdensome, especially in light of the extensive behavioral restrictions already in your regulations. They are further inconsistent from the character of knowing as a beach rental community. I will remind you that you once yourselves said that if a regulation is needed, you need to consider how much regulation is needed and how restricted it must be. You also noted that law-abiding and respectful citizens should have the option to utilize their homes, that property owners have a right to rent their homes, and limiting restrictions as long as other objectives are met, and minimizing constraints on short-term rentals that do not cause problems. We assert that one of the alternatives that we offer is that you maintain all the behavioral restrictions, so that in non-owner-occupied SDRs, that they be accessory, subordinate, and secondary to your residential use, therefore not occupied by SDRs for more than 180 days a year. Primary use would be a residential use by the resident home. This is in addition to what we propose as a self-monitoring group by responsible SDRs who are the most incentivized to...
Three minutes, thank you. Is that not beeping now? Okay. Okay, thank you. Brayden Schwartz, followed by Andrew Giblin. Is Mr. Schwartz here?
I am.
There you are.
Will you hear me in the chat, like?
Yeah, just stand close to it.
Certainly. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brayden T. Schwartz. I live in 170 Brook Street here in knowing, just up the street from Haley Farm. Moved into the village here four years ago. Took a job with EB as an engineer after college, '25. The full suite of my comments are available with the commission here, but I will provide a truncated version. As a member of knowing, as a homeowner, a citizen of the community, as a young man putting down roots here, hoping to start a family of my own, hoping to become involved in knowing, I am strong... down roots here, hoping to start a family of my own, hoping to become involved in Noank, I am strongly opposed to any short-term rentals here in the village and believe they will severely depredate the heritage, character, quality of life of Noank and find the attempt to turn our town into a tourist destination and damage it all. Those over by Mystic Mall School are dealing with much the same issue. I won't go into this, excuse me, I won't go into the specific issues, you know them already. Mostly, I want to make it clear that there are those of us very motivated to preserve Noank as such and a group of us available to network with, myself included, with appropriate regulations on these STRs. I urge you quite emphatically to read the full suite of my comments and review all others opposed and critiquing these proposals. Noank is first and foremost a place where people live. To parcel it out in a fashion suggested, I believe speaks to a disregard for so many of us who live here. Thank you for the time and thank you to the commission for providing the forum. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Andrew Giblin, then Mac McMahon, and then Diane Hitchcock.
Andrew Giblin, 18 Liam Street. In reviewing your proposal, I looked at it against this, which is a zoning ordinance in your proposals here, and I looked how they two fit. And I would suggest that not much of what you have proposed here does fit and is consistent and there's examples, precedences throughout the ordinance. But I would suggest, once you start getting into monitoring frequency, rentals, the number of people, the number of days, I feel you're pushing us towards an administrative liability that we can't handle here. We have capable people over in the firehouse over there, but they're limited by basically their resources, which is funding. It's not perfect, this ordinance, it's simple, maybe it's even primitive, but it's got us this far. I feel what we're seeing here is a push towards the need for higher administration. This is a very excellently considered document, written very carefully. It's more appropriate for the town of Rotten, multiple ZEOs, staff, and building inspectors. It doesn't really fit with the idea of this, and I apologize for this document, this ordinance, because I was one of the people to help put some of it together, but it's consistent with how we can administer, and that's why it's simple and primitive. I would suggest that solutions can be made that are much simpler, and I'd like to echo what Rick Waters said. One of the ways we dealt with changes in zoning ordinance, and when things become noncompliant or prohibited, they become nonconformist. You could stop the number of STRs right now, satisfy a lot of these people's concerns by saying, "No more. They're nonconforming, preexisting." We have a whole chapter that deals with how to do that, and I suggest the reason we do because this has happened before. We don't need to break new ground in writing regulations. We have the mechanisms to handle this. It does, in Section 13, there's lots of monitoring that can happen. You can revoke the certificate of nonconformity. You don't lose control, but you keep the number down. It would satisfy a lot of concerns on both sides today. The other part that I would like to suggest is I'm very nervous about your Section 17 where it talks about the commission basically becoming police officers. That should be, it says in Section 17.2, that you can initiate a complaint or bring a complaint if you're aware of it. My point is, that's a zoning official's job. The zoning commission should be objective and fair-minded, where the zoning enforcement officer should be completely separate. So I would suggest to go, please go back and look at what we already have and see if we can't handle this in a more pragmatic, practical way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mac McMahon.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mac McMahon. I live at 13 Terrace Avenue. I've lived there since, let's see, 1975. I arrived in Noank as a graduate student at the Marine Lab. I occupied various rentals, including the gateway into Noank Marvin Gardens on Church Street. It represented an affordable place for a graduate student to move into the village. Subsequently to that, we rented a home for three years, and then were fortunate enough to find a home that indeed we could afford, and we bought a beer house in the Champagne Village. I think everyone can agree, we have a very, very special community, a long heritage, and a camaraderie that is unique. Several things that I'd like to make note of, I think the STRs are here to state whether it's legal or illegal. I think the best way to gain control of the circumstance is to put common sense regulations in place that will monitor and protect the quality of the environment without undue restrictions on the owners of the building. I think in our circumstance, 13 Terrace Avenue, we have an apartment house, which has had four to five apartments in it for years. We have a house next door, which is a vacation house, and a house across the street, two or three across the street, where it is long-term rent. If STRs are available on them, they may take over those rental positions and the gateway into Noank will be lost. Affordable housing will not be an option for graduate students or young families trying to make their living in Noank, or for the elderly that are on fixed income. If the houses around us all go to short-term rental, we are going to be surrounded by short-term rentals, and that is a significant impact. Parking, noise, et cetera. I know what it's like to live next to a rental facility, have chaos and noise and whatnot break out, and have to deal with finding the absentee landlord. And for the most part, it works fine, but contacting them on an emergent basis is practically impossible. So in order to resolve any sort of dispute or situation, it involves a long-term process. Let me just...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have submitted that to the board for your review.
Is that emailed there already?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Diane Hitchcock. I also live at 13 Terrace Avenue. So I would like to say that I have lived in Noank since 1975. I've owned my home here since 1985. In the meantime, I worked, lived, as Mac said, in long-term rentals or renting a home. When I started off, I actually rented a room in someone's home. So I've had the gamut of rentals. But I feel that the people who rent long-term or contribute to the community, as Mac said, we have rental properties next to us on both sides and across the street. So everyone around us is a rental property, but they all are long-term, they all have kids who go to school there, they contribute to the quality of the community. If those were converted over to short-term rentals, all of those landlords live out of state. There'd be no regulation on how late people stayed up, what they did with their trash, where they parked, parking in front of our own home. Our bedroom is less than 30 feet from the rental property that's to one side of us. So if people are making noise, as vacationers do, till 3 o'clock in the morning, that's going to come right into our bedroom. So it would really change, it would impact how we, you know, how we live in Noank, and that would change the home, if or at. I feel that if we are going to have short-term rentals in our town, it should be by owner-occupied homes, so that people can have someone there who's watching, who's monitoring, and saying, maybe, you know, this is quiet time, midnight or 11 o'clock or whatever, not 3 o'clock in the morning, and not throwing their trash around, leaving stuff that we would then have to clean up. I don't have a problem with people, if they do follow the rules, having two consecutive nights. I know there's been talk about that, and I think a lot of people who want to rent a short-term rental would like to be able to have two consecutive nights. So that, if it's regulated properly, would be fine by me. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next up is Mike Edgerton, then Amy Kerschner, and Michael Noel.
Good evening, y'all. First, I want to thank you for the work you've done on putting these proposed regulations together. It's coming there. I have a few specific comments I'd like to make. First of all, I think we've heard over and over again that most people, at least to my knowledge, that have a short-term rental, don't go into it to make money. They go into it to try to pay off the taxes so that they can stay in the county. That's something that's, you recognize in your preamble of your draft regulations, but it's not something that you recognize when you state the purpose of the regulations. And I think that's important. I suggest that in Section 17.2.2 under purposes, you state that we do want residents to be able to maintain their homes and their family homes. This is important. We've heard this over and over again. That should be specific in the purposes. Prudent to that, when I look at the proposed limitations on rental frequency and number of days per year, and compare that to both our short summer season and to the high taxes that everybody's paying here, I think that there's a mismatch. In fact, it seems like the limit on days and limit on rental frequencies is designed to purposely not allow people who face very high tax bills to pay their tax bills. I think that those should be, at the minimum, extended and better yet, stricken from the regulations. Second, I want to point out that I live at Seneca Drive. If you ask, most of the people here, I don't live in Noank. I don't live in the village. I live in Noank zoning district, but where I live is a suburban town. It's not the quaint historic town with limited parking and lots of legacy housing. Where I live is very different. I live in a suburban area that is much more like the town of Rotten. As such, when I hear many of the concerns about short-term rentals, I think they're very specific to the village, and my suggestion is that when you're looking at restrictive zoning regulations, consider limiting them just to the village. I, from where I sit in Tanglewood, I don't see the problems I hear people talking about. We have plenty of parking, we have plenty of people walking by the street, and I don't mind that. It just doesn't seem like it's a problem outside of the village, and I feel like it's a village concern spreading out to the 80% of the zoning district that is not the village. So my suggestion here is that we limit the restrictive short-term zoning to the village. Finally, looking at some of the behavioral regulations, specifically 17.2.4, where you're trying to limit unmoved behavior and loud noises. These are behaviors that, first of all, are bad for, whether they're short-term rentals or they're a neighbor. They're behavioral issues that should properly be regulated through town ordinances, not through a part-time zoning officer. All right? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Amy Kerschner, and then Michael Noel.
Hi, I'm not, I'm also not very good at talking into a microphone. The regulations that everybody's been talking about have consumed a lot of time and effort on your part as well as our part, a lot of emotion and challenging times. So we recognize on both sides of this issue, there's a lot of emotion. Personally, while we disagree with limiting property rights, and we broadly have learned a lot over the last two years, and we recognize the broad powers of the zoning board to regulate STRs. At the same time, we understand that it has to be based on reasonable purpose and they have to be focused on specific and objective concerns, not subjective concepts. We've lived in Noank for the last 41 years, my family has. Before that, since 1957, we came as short-term visitors to my mother's close friends' family in Noank, so we have a long history here. We've always tried to be extremely generous and friendly neighbors to our adjacent neighbors as well as the community. When we rent, we rent to largely in the summer. We live here, my partner and I live here many, many months out of the year, either he's here or I'm here, and we only rent to mature adults and families. We alert our neighbors at all times if there's any issue. I'm a text away. We have supportive friends in the neighborhood, and we have family close by who's always available to respond. The neighbors obviously have to tell us if there's an infraction or somebody's not following the rules inadvertently or inadvertently, but we are there to make sure we have peaceful enjoyment for everyone in our neighborhood. We understand that some people just cannot tolerate or accept that somebody they don't know is staying for a short-term vacation in our home. We will never be able to change that, but we certainly can go along with your rules. The letter from the attorney who represents some of us here laid out, I think, a good solution, a compromise solution that should protect the interests of the community as well as our property rights. Specifically, they're all laid out, most of the terms that you have suggested we agree with, the frequency and occurrence we think is an overreach, and it's not tied to a specific problem. It goes to this subjective idea of what Noank is. We think it's a wonderful community, we love our home, we have very high tax burdens and very high overhead. We don't think frequency and occurrence solves a specific problem, and we'd like you to regulate accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Michael Noel, then Dr. Leary, then Michael Hewitt.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to just... I would like to say first off that I'm speaking as a member of the public and not as a member of the Fire District Executive Committee. These are my personal comments on those regulations. In general, I'm opposed to rentals that shorten them seven days. I had a neighbor renting out rooms to three separate parties every weekend. They would come and go at all hours, and they had to set off their car alarms when they parked, no matter what the time was. They've just decided to approve the short-term rentals. I think the ZEO should be allowed to shut people down immediately if there are complaints. No long-drawn-out review process to shut it down. These are our neighborhoods. We did not choose to live in a commercial zone or next to a motel. Short-term rentals are basically motels, but without any rules or safety regulations. If the short-term rental regulations are approved, there should be safety inspection requirements. Apartments in the village are currently inspected on a yearly basis. Our fire marshal's inspection workload would more than double if and when the short-term rental regulations are approved, and these additional inspections need to be carried out. Currently, there are a little over 20 apartments that are getting inspected, and with these short-term rentals, I think it would rise to about 45 or 50 inspections. And just in closing, these regulations will be difficult and very expensive to enforce. Our zoning enforcement officer has very limited office hours, as we have, two hours a week. Fees should be adequate to support additional personnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Tucker Leary, then Mike Hewitt, and Linda Hewitt.
Good evening. My name is Tucker Leary. I live at 20 Moreland Point. I previously provided written comments on the proposed regulations to the commission, which I generally support. And I urge the commission to take action as quickly as possible. This process has gone on for quite a long time, and it's acrimonious, as people have pointed out, and it's a growing issue that is worthy of immediate attention. I've noticed this summer that there's a lot more traffic in Noank. Pearl Street is impassable sometimes. That may be because of the boats, or the marines, or the restaurants. But additional short-term rentals with multiple cars are going to exacerbate the problem, and I don't know how the fire truck could get down Pearl Street sometimes during the day, especially on weekends. day, especially on weekends. Zell's graphic that showed the rise in short-term rentals is interesting. I'm not quite sure of the scale, but at the current rate of growth, the last bar could hit the ceiling next year. And a lot of the growth could be, no, could be from commercial interests, real estate speculators who want to flip houses and can use the income from short-term rentals to cover their expenses while they're waiting for the opportunity to sell. Having that type of real estate transaction going on, there will be no owners in those houses. There will just be rental properties. They won't add to the fabric of the community at all. And then finally, the village is in a unique place. There aren't many villages left in the country, and it's worthy of preserving, and it's the responsibility of all of us to contribute to that. So appreciate your taking this difficult issue on. Hope we can reach a satisfactory approach. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Michael Hewitt, and Linda.
My name is Mike Hewitt. I live at Ten River View Avenue in Noing. Linda and I have lived in Noing for thirty-seven years, not as long as some, but long enough to know the appreciated, wonderful community we live in. Only in the past few years has the issue of potential negative effects of short-term rentals raised its ugly head. Over this relatively brief period, it's become apparent that neighbors and friends within Noing are viewing this issue with strong feelings. Let's take a look at the issue. First, there are residents who live in Noing because they enjoy the benefits of life in this small, beautiful seaside location, where they can have the quality of life they desire, which generally includes marine-based activities and/or active community involvement. Second, there are residents, some with long-term, who are long-term neighbors, who desire to keep property within their families but face the problem of ever-increasing taxes and look to retain the means of helping them keep that property. And then third, there are recently people who have decided to purchase property or properties that would provide them additional income, perhaps a great location in which to spend some good time with family and their friends, or it could be just a business opportunity. It certainly isn't my position to judge the intent of anyone else in the community. That would fly in the face of the community camaraderie and spirit that we seek. What I do see, as your role as commissioners, is the desired objective of establishing a set of regulations governing STR in Noing that will protect the objectives of the first two categories of residents I have described above. Unfortunately, there are some who want it all their way, and are not willing to negotiate. Those people are likely to be frustrated and disappointed, but that is the price of living in a democracy. It's the good of the many that should prevail, as long as it is legal and just. I will only mention one objective. I don't want to see this village, the Fire District, develop into commercial housing district, which could happen if you don't establish and enforce sufficient controls to protect us from commercial entities buying up properties and turning them into STRs. I, for one, favor the establishment of a reasonable limit on the number of permits and priority given to current residents. And I reiterate, once these regulations are enacted, there must be a no-nonsense enforcement policy and practice. I want our children and grandchildren to be able to enjoy a community atmosphere, not one inundated with overnight deaths. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comment. Linda Hewitt, and Ben Greenfield.
My name is Linda Hewitt. I live at Ten River View Avenue. We all know that change is inevitable, and that change at any level can be difficult. We, as residents and taxpayers of the Noing Fire District, are at a moment of change, and it is difficult. My personal concern is for the decisions made regarding, for the decisions made regarding STRs is enforcement. STRs have been existent and providing in our Fire District for a number of years without enforcement of our zoning regulations. We are now going through a protracted and somewhat agonizing procedure that is totally unnecessary, as STRs should never have been allowed to exist, however they do exist. My question and concern is, in the end, are the regulations going to be enforced by the Noing Zoning Commission and the zoning enforcement officer? Or has this procedure been an act of futility? That would be unacceptable to me, and I hope to all Noing residents.
Thank you. Ben Greenfield, Elizabeth Grace Peck.
Here we are, friends and neighbors gathered together in a house of worship, dealing with the issue of short-term rentals. It's a matter that threatens, but it's unlikely to permanently divide us. So let's reflect on and understand each other's points of view, and let's also find a compromise that will allow us to move forward without conflict. In a scriptural sense, we are all actors in a scene that has played and replayed itself since the dawn of civilization, where we learned that there was no room at the inn in Bethlehem. I like the fact that we're here in a church, because churches have played a role in my growth as a human being and for my love of this good community. I was baptized at Saint Joseph's Women Catholic Church, next door to the multifamily where I took catechism on the first floor of the house I called home. As kids, we camped out and played under the Iron Fire Escape in the back of the Methodist Church at the bottom of High Street. A few years later, Reverend Pat, Pat Robinson and me taking Christmas lights from the big pine tree at the entrance to the Baptist Church, Arkham. He had us pictures there as penance. In my thirties, I was a member of the Board of Directors of the Noing Historical Society, which is housed in the stone Episcopal Church on Silgan Street. Some of my most creative moments came from that time, when the board, led by the late Mary Anderson, resurrected the mid-winter sea fever follows. At a young sea fever, I had a lot of fun, enjoyed a lot of laughter, and raised money to rehabilitate the late Winchester store. Therefore, I have great faith that we can come together on any issue of importance, including this one. Some of us have come here to speak our truths and hear each other's feelings about the issue of short-term rentals. My truth is that through a year, I have hosted guests in one of my furnished rental apartments where I live. As much as I enjoy welcoming guests to our village, I believe that it is important to maintain my other units' long-term rentals. It's all about balance. Besides, short-term methods on property are a lot of work, and they're not cheap. There's professional management, furnishing, supplying, and cleaning that all add up. The belief that short-term renting is more profitable than long-term is usually a myth, especially because of the expense of doing short-term rentals properly. At the same time, limiting the frequency and the number of short-term rental occurrences will do nothing to improve guest and property owner experiences, and will likely result in legal disputes between property owners and our zoning commission. Permits for STRs are a good idea, as is restricting new homeowner, new homeowner to short-term rental activities for three, maybe five-year curing process. In the end, one can do this in a sloppy manner or do it well. But in Noing, most of us know how to do things well, and I believe that we should treat the matter of short-term rentals with the same care and compromise that we do with other important matters in our community.
Thank you. Another great time presentation. Thank you. Elizabeth Grace Peck, and Gabriella Smiley.
I'm pretty, thank you. Thank you for your confidence with Rigsback and Eighty-One Main Street. Thank you for all the time and work you have put into drafting a regulation. It seems to me that our own line issue here is the commercialization of our residential districts. That is the fundamental issue that you all, the real people, are cracking with. And to allow the, our residential districts to become commercialized is going to destroy certainly the quality of life in Noing Village. I agree with whoever it was who said there really is a big difference between suburb and Noing and the village. The major issues are in the village. So if there's any way legally you can get special attention to the village, that would I think be extremely helpful. I support Matt, Matt Lee's amendments to your draft. I think owner-occupied is the only way to go. Your draft, which is a very great deal of work, well thought, our problem is, I think, it's probably unenforceable. It's too complicated. There are too many moving parts. And I think, as Mike, no, but no point in that. It's going to require a small group of officials to enforce the right of extension. I also want to strongly suggest that you keep short-term rentals out of our commercial districts, which are, we have a village, village commercial district, and we have marine commercial districts. The village commercial district, our tiny business center, is where a lot of our long-term renters live, over the building, the street around the corner. And in that little commercial area, it would be a shame to start to allow short-term rentals to push out the young people who are, who would be the future long-term Noingers. As for the marine districts, history shows many towns where marine districts have been allowed to become residential. That was the end of the marine district. The province of built-in residential buildings wiped out marine districts, and we should protect both of those.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Gabriella Smiley, then Kelly Bean Hogan, and Marian McKenna.
Hi, my name is Gabriella Smiley, and I live in the Noing Fire District. I am here to offer an alternative context with which to consider this issue. Indeed, I do disagree with the board's interpretation of the legality of STRs at the outset. I'm sure that each of you were able to enjoy the Fourth of July holiday this past weekend, but the meaning behind the Fourth of July is more than having barbecues and seeing fireworks. Our independence as a country was a repudiation of England's overreach of government from unfair and unjust laws. Also happening during the time of the American Revolution was a realization that people possessed inalienable rights. Thus, our government was founded balancing the scope of the authority of a governing body on the one hand with the idea that a government must take into consideration the fact that people are born with inalienable rights. Those rights are defined in the context of life, liberty, and property. In fact, that is one of the reasons why I disagree with the board's opening remarks, that our inalienable property rights are irrelevant to this discussion. Indeed, I believe the fact that the board thinks so is part of the problem. Indeed, as a former civil litigator, I'm aware that a government can only act under a rational, legitimate basis without passion or prejudice to any group of people, regardless of their personal beliefs. The bottom line here is there's no rational connection between how long a visitor comes to stay in Noing, or how many times a month a visitor may stay in an STR with behavioral issues sought to be controlled with the board's proposed regulation. Those behavioral issues are already addressed in our laws with traffic laws and nuisance laws. We do not need a pretense with this STR issue to address visitors' behavior. I think all of us want our government leaders to be fair and just to all the rights at stake with this issue, and not simply enact a law because, they quote, "have the power to do so." Therefore, no matter how many residents opposed to the fundamental rights of renting out one's property on a short-term basis, who have repeated the irrational notion that somehow people renting STRs for a weekend, a week, or any period of time, less than thirty days, causes more noise, displays more unloved behavior, or causes more street parking and traffic jams, simply does not make it true. It is clear there is no rational connection between how many days a homeowner is legally able to rent their home and for how long with the behavior of a renter or a homeowner. I believe this board is a moral responsibility to be fair and just, while dispensing the awesome powers it has given over us. Because of this issue, I've had an opportunity to speak with many people in this community about their grievances with this and other issues. And the people I spoke to.
Thank you, Gab. Are you, you're going to submit this?
Yes, I plan to submit in writing. Thanks.
Thank you. Kelly, I don't, is it Kelly Bean or Kelly Hogan?
Bean.
Bean, thank you. And then Marian McKenna.
Kelly Bean, Twenty-Seven Mill Lab. I'm speaking tonight in support of responsible short-term rentals in Noing. I, along with many others, oppose the commission's severe limits on frequency and occurrence. Such severe limitations threaten to change the character of Noing, what it is today and what it has historically been. The coexistence of permanent residents and seasonal summer coastal residents. These seasonal coastal residents come to our community with open wallets, ready to support our local businesses, Carson Stores, Price's Marina, Casalos, to name just a few. In addition, these seasonal residents, at times, become permanent residents. After a weekend visit here as a short-term renter, they fall in love with our little slice of New England shoreline. Again, I strongly oppose the limitation on short-term rentals in Noing for the reasons mentioned, as well as many others submitted in writing to the zoning commission over the past two-plus years that these regulations have been being developed. Please consider what appears to be the majority's opinion, based on the letters submitted, and alter the frequency and occurrence, and occurrence limitations with the suggestions provided in writing by supporters of the short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Marian McKenna, and David Campbell, and Stephen M. Berr.
Hi, my name is Marian McKenna, and I live at Thirty-Six Center Street. I've been renting to guests, because I welcome them into my home, just like I think we've all done with the friends and family who've come to visit us. As I listen tonight, I really don't recognize any of the behaviors that we're talking about, because I haven't experienced any of those behaviors. My guests have come to my house, are respectful, they're quiet, they go out in the community, they spend money, they pay taxes on the bill that they're charged, and they are delightful. My neighbors are happy, I'm happy, and I want everybody here to recognize that there is an ability to do an STR that is responsible and that is an asset to our community. For example, I use money to improve my property. And when I improve my property, I go to the local hardware store. I hire local people. I improve my property, which spreads out to my neighbors, and it's a win for all of us. I would so love to talk to you about how I do it, and I do it by making rules. And once I make the rules, I make sure that all these bad behaviors are not available to my guests, who depend on my review of their behavior to enable them to rent the next gig. So if you come to my house and you make noise and you throw trash around, I'm going to write you up. And you're going to have that on your name, and when you try to go to police, they're going to say, "Ooh, she was very good." And we have a built-in system with Airbnb and other platforms where you can vet a person gently. I get to read the reviews of the people before they come to my house, and then I get to decide whether to rent to them, and then they get to read my rules, decide whether they can live with them. If they can't live with them, they don't come. And I get the best renters, and they are so good for Noing. They fall in love with our community like we all did, and they look forward to coming back. Frequency and number of days, you have said, I believe, previously that you don't want to punish hosts who are doing a good job managing. Frequency and number of days punishes me. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. David Campbell, then Stephen Penberry, then Elizabeth.
Hi. My name is Dave Campbell. I live at 26 Gold Street, Boston Price's Marina. I first came to Noank in the mid-fifties, served on the zoning, knowing zoning commission in the seventy-four, eighty-four, nine years that I was the chairman. I've served on the knowing Board of Appeals for thirty years, so I'm familiar with zoning. And I'm familiar with some of the downsides of zoning. In the mid-seventies, we had issues preserving these values in town, and we, because of an onslaught of commercialism, which is why you have a zoning book today instead of a lease book. People wanted to come into town and build expansive marinas, restaurants, bars, motels, and everything of that sort. We looked at Noank, and we decided, and people in Noank agreed with us, that we didn't want to open Noank to commercialism. And that's the way it has been, with few exceptions. And SDR is a commercial business, and you are opening all of the residential districts to commercial businesses if you start opening it to an SDR. Believe me, big lawyers can crack that to any business that you, you want to start in Secondly, I think I want to, the knowing Fire District has not fully supported knowing enforcement for a long time, probably the last twenty to thirty years since Ralph Reynolds and Mel Pienaar. I see no future efforts to be, to be considered to change that. Zoning enforcement is not instantaneous. You can't, if you have a problem with an SDR, you can't call a zoning enforcement officer who lives in East Line to come and help you out very quickly. You have to wait until he appears on the Tuesday night that he appears. And then he'll just hand you a form and say, "Submit complaint." That complaint will go through, typically, he'll make a decision on that. If they don't like, if their SDR person doesn't like the decision, it'll go to the DBA, and if the DBA, if they don't like the DBA decision, then it'll go to the courts. You won't see a resolution to that for over a year, and it's very low priorities in the court. So enforcement of any kind of a nuisance is almost not.
Thank you. All right. You did submit these for the record already.
Yeah.
We haven't. Yep, thank you. Stephen Penberry, then Elizabeth Penberry.
Good evening. My name is Steve Penberry, co-owner of Eighty-three High Street. Thank you very much for the opportunity to submit comments on the draft regulations. The Noank zoning commission proposed short-term rental regulations are too loose and would allow Noank's out-of-control short-term rental situation to continue. Your regulations must address the following three potential problems. First, short-term rentals must be owner occupied for the sake of accountability, and short-term rental operators should be recognized and regulated as homeowner operators. The commercial and waterfront zones must be protected as such and allowed to thrive as they grow the Noank economy. Short-term rentals benefit the operators and not the community, and should be prohibited from these critical economic areas. The regulations must outline the specific procedures by which they will be enforced. The Noank zoning commission lacks credibility in this area, as it has tolerated the proliferation of illegal short-term rentals over the past three years. Relying on enforcement by neighborhood complaints will destroy the social peacefulness of the fire district. Draft new language for inclusion in the Noank zoning commission proposed regulation composed by our community attorney, Matt Manelli, is being sent through under separate cover. We believe that these proposed revisions will address the issues discussed. Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Good evening. The first goal in our zoning regulations is promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. What becomes of our community when the rule of law applies to some and not to others? The short-term rentals that are illegal and have been allowed to proliferate in Noank are incompatible with the goals and, the goals of our zoning regulations, particularly in the density cap coverage. They commercialize amenities that are paid for by knowing residents and place burdens on our very limited resources, most especially the pedestrian environment. We have a personal experience with this when in 2018, my husband and I met with the zoning department as we explored the possibility of buying a home in Noank. We were emphatically told that unhosed short-term rentals are illegal in Noank. We were dismayed when we soon discovered after we purchased our home that zoning laws are not enforced. Unhosted short-term rentals have grown exponentially due to the inaction and negligence of the zoning compliance officer. The number of illegal short-term rentals has grown from about six to over thirty in the three years since. With all due respect to the zoning commission, the proposed regulations are very complex and nearly impossible to enforce. As passed as prologue, if your proposed regulations go into effect, things will likely go on just as before. There is no enforcement in Noank. The burden of checking short-term rental violations will continue to fall on the neighbor whose ardent wish is to preserve the peacefulness and sense of community in their neighborhoods, not to track the activities of a small hotel next door. I urge the zoning commission to modify the regulations to include the language prepared by our community attorney, Matt Manelli. This will protect our residential districts from commercialization and allow our business zones to prosper. Noank should go back to its roots and keep regulations simple and enforceable. Short-term rentals must be limited to people letting out homes or small apartments in properties they themselves occupy. This practice has a long history in Noank and in other small communities around the state, and it works. Richfield, Warren, Norfolk, New England require short-term rentals to be owner occupied. Owner occupied short-term rentals are self-regulating, offer less social disruption and inconvenience to the neighborhood while still allowing the homeowner a financial opportunity. Or follow the example of West Hartford, Simsbury, and Newton, Connecticut, and continue to prohibit short-term rentals and apply and enforce the law equally to preserve, promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your comment, Victoria Verdi.
Speaking as a proxy for Steve DiViaci, it's on Fifty-two River View Ave., and thank you to the commission for the opportunity and to the knowing that district for embracing the community. Steve, in 1917, pulling earrings from working at the Palmer's and Son Shipyard, I'm working quite my dad's family purchased a home on River View Ave., where my dad was born and lived for ninety-six years. I am a native Noanker and spend every summer here. My children spent every single summer of their lives in Noank. It was important for me and my family to purchase our home in Noank so we could continue the tradition of family and joy. It was also expensive, and it continues to be so. SDR has been not only an opportunity for us to afford the home, but an important means to maintain it. SDR guests are invariably enchanted by our village of Noank, they're respectful, courteous, and conscientious. We have no complaints by any of our neighbors about noisy parking or any other inconvenience. My guests keep my lights on, and some of my bills paid during the winter, as well as help the economy when motors and tourists are scarce, if not nonexistent. It's both amusing and pathetic to me when I'm told about rumblings of the few against STRs that in summer Fifty-two River View is a party house. Well, these people are not wrong, they're just wrong about who's doing the party. It's me and my family enjoying summertime, just as it always has been. Enjoy outdoors with lobster cookouts, joyful conversations, and making music and singing. It is unreasonable to assess blame on a handful of STRs for issues such as traffic parking, noise in the village, with hundreds of boats, select commercial marinas, charter fishing businesses, and restaurants. If there are a few problems in Noank with STRs, then address the problem. Houses do not restrict those of us whose homes cause a problem. My home is not an investment property. When I am not using it, I rent it to folks, many of whom have a connection to the area. They want to enjoy visiting family and friends and sharing where they grew up with their own families. My home gives them that opportunity while allowing me to own it. The cause for regulations must be based on reasonable purpose substantiated by facts and due process, facts specific to our village, not perceptions and assumptions. The fabric of Noank is rich mystery of part-time seasonal residents and voters, visitors who come and fall in love with our village and want to spend time here, just as many new Noankers and objectors of SDR have done. It is, it is, just as it always has been, and by the grace of God and the will of the village, not the few who wield unreasonable power will always be with love and respect for Noank. Steve DiViaci, Fifty-two River View Ave.
Thank you. There was one person who we called on who wasn't here yet, and she is now up. Sandy Wallace? Yeah. Okay.
Good evening. First, I'm sorry I wasn't here, my name was called. I'd like to thank you guys first, because I know this is a lot of your time, a lot of your energy spent on trying to make this community come together. When we're really far apart, I have submitted letters in the past in support of the STRs. I do feel strongly about it, but I also understand how our residents who don't support it feel as well. I'm looking to you guys to come up with a compromise where this village comes together and isn't ripped apart. I know it's a hard task for you guys, but if you listen to all the issues that I've heard, all the slides that I've heard tonight, I hear you guys can do it. Thank you again for all your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Now, that concludes the people who signed up in advance. We also have people who signed up tonight, and I had said we'd take a break at eight o'clock, it's seven minutes of. So we're gonna take a ten-minute break here, quick, and just walk around, relax a bit, and then we'll, we have another fifteen speakers. It's gonna be great. Thank you for taking this week. We're gonna get started in just one minute. And when the remaining speakers turn to microphone, your listeners must stand very close to the microphone so that they can project to them. Thank you. Okay. And we will get started. First up is Paul Bates, followed by Fred Fisher, and then Eleanor Fisher.
Paul Bates, Forty-seven Church Street. I could thank the commission, giving the community this opportunity. Great division in the community, I blame on the internet. Every worst-case scenario is there. Noank is not an extreme. In 1956, when Noank adopted zoning, did not try to turn back the clock or see every possible evil. Pretty much, what was there, stayed there. The proposed ordinance is much too generous when tested with a common zone test built out, which would permit thirty thousand nights of STR violation. An ordinance that more reflects where we are today, with about twenty-five units on each side of the tracks, would permit about eighteen thousand units. As you can see, it's almost half what you're currently proposing. Anyone on the commission with a previous limited access prior work issue with apparent ST, PTSD symptoms, I feel should recuse themselves from that discussion. When you look to high-priced Boston lawyers for answers for Noank, you're looking at the wrong sandbox. Many uses are not permitted for all those in all the districts. I feel new individuals should be hired to administer and enforce SDR program with an enterprise fund to support it. The rates would go up and down to cover the expense, not the property tax rate. I also suggest that you add to your goals and objectives, do not create a situation that will cause a three to four hundred, excuse me, a three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar legal bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Fisher?
I'm Fred Fisher. I live at Twenty-six Main Street, Noank. And thank you all for the work you've done, and thanks for letting us talk to you. My wife and I moved to Noank in December of nineteen ninety-nine, which means we still have about three more generations to go before we can recall Noanker. But anyway, we, we've come to love this community, and we know, we've learned a lot about it in the twenty years we've been here. We've been looking for a village with a mix of residential and commercial properties, rather than a suburban, so-called suburban community, and ideally near the ocean. We felt very lucky to have found Noank, a seaside village with a strong awareness of the history, of its history, and a desire to maintain its special character. It has somehow managed to preserve its unique qualities, even though it is located between two major cities, at least so far, as we can imagine. The toxic spread of unregulated short-term rentals is a major threat to our community. And unless they existed before 1956, STRs are illegal in Noank. Those before that, as everybody knows, grandfathered in. Recently, a majority of Noank voters rejected the candidacy to the NZC, the Noank Solid Commercial Commission, of a person who is completely against any regulation of STRs. This rejection is compelling evidence that the will of the people is for regulations that will help preserve the nature of our beloved community. In addition to property owners, there is a significant number of long-term renters in our village and in the fire district who share the same feelings about this special place. The addition of new STRs without proper regulations would jeopardize the quality of life here as long-term renters. It might eliminate the possibility of long-term renters over time. And we want long-term renters, people who care about the community. Another issue is the difficulty of enforcing the regulations firmly proposed by the Noank zoning commission. A lot of this has already been set, but it needs to be kept in mind. The amendments that the commission has put forward represent a heck of a lot of work, and, and we understand that. The problem is that, basically, if these regulations were adopted as currently proposed, they would place a big burden. Is that it?
Okay, so- But we do have your letter.
Quick, quick sentence is, is that one solution to this problem is for-
Please, we'll refer it in your letter.
... to live in the homes.
Thank you. Eleanor Fisher?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to speak. Fred and I live at 26 Main Street. As he said, we've been here for over, just over 20 years. We came from Brooklyn, and we lived on a one-block street right in front of the park, and it was very much like a village atmosphere, and that's one of the reasons that we feel so much at home here. Noank Village is unique. Many of its well-loved houses date back to the 19th century and beyond. Furds fill our mornings and evenings with songs. Neighbors quickly become friends, the water beckons. But Noank Village is not in the country. Our houses are close together, and we know how to both engage with our neighbors and to allow them privacy. They treat us with the same respect. The new owners regard their property not as a place to live in and cherish, but as a commodity. But Noank, Noank is neither a bedroom community nor a cute destination adventure. Short-term renters do not care about their temporary neighbors. They are spending tough dollars to drink, play music, and crowd Noank's small dock where the local children hunt for crabs. I propose an immediate moratorium on the STRs until regulations are established, and suggest that each STR owner be only allowed to rent for three weeks per year. I, and I would like to, this is, I just thought of this now. Our fire district, I believe, now unfortunately, needs to actually hire a person who would oversee the STRs. This is a burden which we would have to be shoulder, I guess, by both owners and owners of STR. I'd like to close with one line from Oscar Wilde, "Each man kills that thing he loves." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Sharon Lemazare?
Hi. I'm the director and.
You have to come to the microphone so we can project it, yes.
I would suggest, I don't think.
And you might not be picked up by the recorders up here, and that's your choice.
Thank you for the opportunity and to speak. Thank you for the work that you've done. I'm a relative newbie in Noank, five years at 55 Silpin, the old church, which many people hold in their hearts, and I certainly hold it in my heart. And I've done much work to make it something, I think, unique and special and in great keeping with Noank and its character and its values, as shown in the streets, in the feeling. I've written many poems and stories about Noank. I'm also a writer. And during the pandemic, I spent much time just feeling the vibes, if you will, of Noank. What brought me to Noank five years ago were childhood visits to Noank and a memory as I traveled through the world and lived in different villages, a very special village that was between Boston and New York. And what an extraordinary and enchanting place lodged in my memory for nearly 50 years, until I could return and become part of the community. Clearly, the pandemic has made it difficult for certain community activities, and I long for those things to return and to be able to enjoy unfolding. The corner at which I live, a corner behind Silpin, has become very frenetic, and I don't know what to attribute that to. Is it the unabated short-term rentals? Is it pandemic fervor, people escaping the big city to come here and let loose? But there have been lots of traffic jams at my corner and zipping around the corner, nearly clipping my puppy and me at various times of day. There's just been a more frenetic, busy, we've jogged some of the neighbors, corner of Times Square. And without being, you know, a funny guy and thinking that I should live in an medieval village with walls, I do think that unabated tipping of the scales towards commercialism will lead to regret going down the line. And one thing we can never take back is our dreams.
Alyssa Kopelman?
I don't have any statement.
Pardon me? Is Alyssa Kopelman?
I'm here. I don't have any.
You don't? Okay. Oh, you signed up to be here. Sorry. Okay. Cindy Van Zin, and then Sharon Murphy. Oh, you signed up to be here too. Sharon Murphy?
Right here. I'm not going to tell anybody about anything about me. It's not about me. But I do want to say one thing. I hear about the short-term rentals. I live on 31 Hadley Court. And anybody who knows 31 Hadley Court, we read the newspaper a lot a couple of years ago, well, two years ago. But regardless of that, I think that the taxes are a separate issue than what we're talking about here. Do I think the taxes are high? Absolutely. I think everybody knows they're high. I have to shovel the road. But, not asking what you do, but the taxes are a separate issue, and the short-term rentals are a separate issue. If there's an issue about the taxes, and that's why we're legitimating STRs, then maybe we have to go to the core of what the problem is, and that would be the taxes. And that's really all I have to say. And then the other thing, oh yeah, enforcement. I don't want to be the policeman. I already am, and it's about parking, and it is in the village, and I totally agree with this gentleman that doesn't live in the village, and he says it's very different outside the village. I believe that to be true. But in the village, parking is an issue, a big issue. Garbage is a big issue. And the people, all the people. And to the person that just said, it's summer. Everybody comes to Noank in the summer. You'll be used to it. In the summer.
Please speak to us and not to another speaker.
In the summer, people come to Noank. And anybody who lives in Noank knows that. And if people want to stay in their own homes because of COVID, they're paying the taxes, and I believe they should be able to stay in their own homes. Short-term rentals are difficult. It's different. And part of me in my gut says that if people are accountable and living in their property, like one woman said, she lives there and she made sure that she monitors the people renting, that's very different than somebody just saying, here, manage that property, and every three or four days, I want to collect. I haven't had any problem with short-term rental, and I know there was a person on my street that did do Airbnb. And I know it was $500 a night, but, and I've been in the house, it's beautiful. She could have three couples in there. Never have I had a problem, no. It's been one family, they live, and they want to be on the water. It hasn't been an issue, like I said before. But I can see where some people would have an issue, and have an issue being a police person. The residents don't want to be police.
Thank you. Paul Cholmet?
Hi, my name is Paul Comet. I'm 129 St. Ica Drive. So I submitted a memo earlier today, which should appear a little bit from. So while I encourage a level of regulation and permitting of STRs in our community, I believe the proposal that we're talking about has placed a highly restrictive limit on individual owners of the Noank property, in an attempt to honestly preserve the Noank community, of course. So this memo outlines some areas I believe can be improvements to reduce the limits on the individuals while improving the Noank community overall. There is a regulation, 1724, well, 1724, there's a number of regulations there, ownership waiting period for STR use of three years. I assume the intent of this regulation is to stop the purchase of Noank property for sole purpose of rental use. An alternative to this regulation, we've heard here, is not to limit the use of the property, but to limit the total, so one alternative is to limit the total number of STR permits, which Waters talked about, in certain zone districts. So we can limit that to certain zone districts, like Gidgeton talked about, just being a historic district, and this could be a percentage of the total available properties. With such a change, the individual ownership rights are preserved, so we're not strongly limiting, although they'll still be regulated by STR permits, and the town will not be overrun with STR properties. Another mentioned reason for STR use of the property is to generate revenue to cover growing property costs. Limiting both the number of days and concurrent frequency of rentals cripples the owner's ability to cover property costs to the point where it's probably not likely worth the owner's effort. In addition, the regulations there severely limit an owner-occupied STR. And I think we would want to encourage owner-occupied STRs since these owners will be fully involved in the community, always be available to renter, will care for the property like any other homeowner in the community. I propose that the rental frequency is more lenient than the regulation of number of rental days per year is eliminated. And I also strongly propose that the owner-occupied STRs are exempt from that regulation, so in case they have multiple bedrooms that need to be rented concurrently or one has to be open. There are a number of regulations also that limit how the behavior is of the renters, quiet hours, waste disposals, including response to complaints. I outline it in the memo.
I'll read it. Thank you so much. Bruce Avery, then Ken Bates, and George Rallett.
So I'm Bruce Avery, 55 West Avenue Avenue. I'm here vehemently opposed to the STR regulations as proposed. I think we deem regulations, but I think these are way too restrictive, overbearing, too hard to enforce. I think they would be bad for the quality and the character of the village. I think that you need to make, you need to make it accessible and affordable to live here. You need to make it feel to have young people and elderly be able to afford to live here, and I think this would be critical in that way. And I think it could be a much simpler regulation. What we've done is we've limited to six people, and we only rent to mature adults, and we've never had any trouble at all. No parking, no noise, no parties, nothing. And it also helps the renter because you have better quality of tenants. I think the regs are way too complicated. It could be done simply and hit on a few points. I think the frequency and occupancy is very difficult. Record keeping, that is, that's what we require is unnecessary and makes it more difficult to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Bates? No. Okay, you just signed up to, yeah, okay, thank you. George Rallett? Is George Rallett here? Okay, let's just take a pause for a second here. Okay. No, Mr. Rallett, okay. That concludes everybody who had signed up. It's earlier than we thought, but that's okay. Everybody has other things to do. I do want to thank you for providing your views in the thoughtful and objective way that you did. We truly appreciate your contributions. All of the written comments have already been digitized and they're stored, and the link we sent out last night to the Noank mailing list, you can get out and read any of the letters you want. The commission will begin considering its views on what is heard and read at future special meetings yet to be scheduled. So I thank you, and wish you a good evening. And you can still submit written comments, technically to July 13th, but it's something trickles in later, and we haven't had a meeting yet. Who would consider?